Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Aspacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Seelicker.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
Thank you. Our first order of business this evening, I think that we're going to swear in some firefighters this evening. So I'll turn this over to Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much. And Chief Sanderson? Jim Ritterbach.
Good.
And have all of your derm mates come in, too.
To the soul of our night.
Everyone in?
Nope.
Nope, not here anymore.
Any family members? Jim, did you want to have to come up front here? Sure? Well, good evening, everyone. And this is one of these special opportunities to acknowledge the outstanding work of our firefighting division. And we have two promotions this evening. And I know these gentlemen have prepared themselves well for these challenges. And I'll let Chief Sanderson, before we do the actual swearing in, maybe you'd like to comment, Chief, just a little bit on what process we've been going through here in recent weeks, how we came to these decisions, and perhaps tell a little bit about the first person to be sworn in. James Ritterbach.
Our promotions are guided by civil service. We have a written examination, and then we also have a position paper, which each of the candidates has an opportunity to lay out their vision for the future of the Fire Division, and of course, an interview process. The interview committee makes a recommendation of the mayor, and the mayor makes the appointment. This is Jim Ritterbach. He's been with us for 22 years, a solid veteran firefighter. Has been very involved in our fire prevention program. Most of the young people in the city have seen Jim throughout the years as he works alongside Lieutenant Mike Leesman. I think he's going to continue that program and do a great job for us. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Chief. And Jim, if you would like to please come over by the flag here. And you sure there's no one that you would like to?
Nope.
Okay, fine. Chief, would you like to come over, maybe, on the other side there? And we'll try and, I'll read these slowly. Okay? I, James Ritterbach.
I, James Ritterbach.
Please, I'm sorry. We are swearing. Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
Do my duty.
As Fire Lieutenant for the City of Bowling Green.
As Fire Lieutenant for the City of Bowling Green.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Bowling Green.
And the Charter of the City of Bowling Green.
I will protect.
I will protect.
Safeguard.
Safeguard.
And preserve life.
And preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I will remain true.
And I will remain true.
To the ethics of the fire service.
To the ethics of the fire service.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the position.
Discharge the duties of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
Jim, congratulations to you. All very good. Lucas, please come forward. Would you like any family members to?
No, it's up to them.
Do you have your mother-in-law here, too?
This is Lieutenant, now Captain, Lucas Ward. He's been with the Fire Division for 17 years, and has been a lieutenant for the last three years, now being promoted to captain. Luke's been very involved in our communications updates at the Fire Division. He's done a great job, not only our shared dispatch with the Police Division, working out the details of that, but also updating our radio communications. So I'm glad to have Luke promoted tonight to captain.
Thank you very much, Chief. Lucas, if you would please hold up your right hand and say after me, "I, Lucas Ward."
I, Lucas Ward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As Fire Captain for the City of Bowling Green.
As Fire Captain for the City of Bowling Green.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Bowling Green.
And the Charter of the City of Bowling Green.
I will protect.
I will protect.
Safeguard and preserve life.
Safeguard and preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I will remain true.
And I will remain true.
To the ethics of the fire service.
To the ethics of the fire service.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the position.
Discharge the duties of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
Luke, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good.
We're missing one. We're down. We got one at the finish camps. Everett and Eloise and my wife Katie, so.
And your mother-in-law.
She's, she's, she's.
You better not forget your mother-in-law.
I just want to recognize Seashift. Thanks, guys, for coming out tonight. It's a great group of people.
A special thanks to all the firefighters in the back there for coming in.
Now, Mr. President, we have two special presentations tonight. The first will be the presentation of the Human Relations Commission Honor Roll Award to the Brown Bag Food Project. And so at this time, I'm going to call the Secretary of the Human Relations Commission, the Chair and the Vice, the Co-Chairs, I should say, are out of town. And, but you're here, Marcy St. John, so that's lucky you. And I know that there are some members of the Human Relations Commission here. I saw Margaret Montague. Please feel free to come up to Margaret. You can't be bashful sitting in the back there, so. No. And we're going to invite the representatives here from the Brown Bag to please come forward. The Brown Bag Food Project, a great group. They work so hard. We had a wonderful ribbon cutting over there not too many months ago, it seemed like. But Marcy, I'm going to turn this over to you, please.
The Human Relations Commission of the City of Bowling Green has a six-part mission statement. Part number five says that the HRC shall serve our city by recognizing efforts on the parts of individuals and/or groups to promote a peaceful community. People who are hungry, people whose families go hungry, are disadvantaged and challenged every time a meal is missed. Peace is a struggle. Tonight, the HRC recognizes the work of the Brown Bag Food Project in seeking to end food insecurity in our community. It's a serious issue. Nearly 15% of Wood County residents do not have reliable access to affordable nutritious food. Ohio is tied for sixth place nationwide on the issue of food insecurity. Tonight, the HRC is recognizing the work of the Brown Bag Food Project, which was also recently recognized and supported by ACT BG and Modern Woodman. The Brown Bag Food Project began several years ago when Amy Holland, right here next to me, was working at Walmart and noticed that coworkers did not always have a meal at break time. So she started making brown bag meals and passing them around. Soon, others joined in and more meals were distributed. Today, 300 persons a month receive food from an active 401(c)(3) organization with a permanent location, a board of directors, an online presence, and a role in community events. The Brown Bag Food Project does a variety of fundraisers, and donations can also be given online at brownbagfoodproject.org. Walmart is a generous supporter, and as a nonprofit, the Brown Bag Food Project is eligible for free food from the Seagate Food Bank. Food donations also come from Panera and Jimmy John's. Volunteers are an essential part of the organization. Some are doing BGSU service hours, some are doing court-ordered service hours, and some are walk-ins, just looking to help for a few hours. The Brown Bag Food Project is located at 115 West Mary's Suite B, if you want to stop in. They have open hours on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday evenings from 5:00 to 8:00. It's an active, committed agency serving a vital need in Bowling Green and surrounding areas. Accepting the Honor Roll recognition this evening on behalf of the Brown Bag Food Project is the founder and Board Chair, Amy Holland, and members of the Board and volunteers as well. The Human Relations Commission is very pleased to present an Honor Roll Award to the Brown Bag Food Project, whose name will soon appear engraved on the wall plaque over there that the Human Relations Commission maintains. One final note, the Human Relations Commission is always on the lookout for individuals or groups for either an Honor Roll recognition or the Martin Luther King Drum Major for Peace Award. Nomination forms for both of these awards can be downloaded at the city website, bgohio.org, and we look forward to reading your nominees for these awards.
Thank you very much, Marcy, for telling the story of the Brown Bag Food Project. And Margaret, I want to thank you both for your outstanding service on the Human Relations Commission. And at this time. Certificate to you as a small token of our appreciation for your good work in the community. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Photo time. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, it's our, once a year, we have the great pleasure of identifying and cheering on and lauding the work of the, our outstanding Bike Safety Commission, their dedication to duty. Much like the Human Relations Commission, they meet monthly, sometimes even more often. And they're one of 23, 24 commissions, committees, special boards, and so forth, that really help to make the City of Bowling Green function. And so I'm especially grateful to the members of the Bicycle Safety Commission who are here tonight. I'm going to ask them to come forward. Bob Rex, Linda Kidd, who was not too long ago a Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year recipient, Greg Dickerson, and Kristin Ottley, of course, from our Parks and Recreation. And we're going to have a special presentation now to the Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year. This is one of the few times we've not seen Dr. Langendorf here. And we're going to ask to come forward here Meg Ramlow to receive on behalf of her late husband, Eric, who was killed in a bike auto accident. And is Ed here tonight, Ed Metzger? Oh, I was hoping that Ed Metzger could come, your very close friend, the CEO of BioFet, who organized so, so skillfully the Ride in Silence in memory of your husband. And that was really an outstanding event there. So Kristin, I'm going to turn this over to you right now, if you wish, or if you wish me to. Okay? Yes, well, first, I hope, Meg, you can see this. This is, will be a permanent, be hanging here. You're, you're hung, too. The City of Bowling Green Bicycle Safety Commission Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year for 2017 is hereby granted to Eric Ramlow for exemplifying the spirit of bicycling, bicycle safety, and bicycle-related activities. Presented to Meg Ramlow on June 19, 2017, and it's signed by me, and my position is mirrored. I'm so sorry about your loss. If you would like to use the microphone here. Well, that's all right, Meg.
Thank you for honoring Eric here tonight. Keith Webb brought the Ride of Silence to Northwest Ohio, and then he passed the torch to Linda Kidd, who raised her hand to volunteer for the Bowling Green City Ride of Silence, which was held just a few weeks ago. And there were nearly 100 riders there, if you didn't see the coverage on that. These were the shirts. It gives you a little flavor of who Eric was. That was when the Buckeyes won the bowl game on January 1 of 2016. So Eric was definitely a poster child for the cycling community. He rode nearly 5,000 miles every year in Northwest Ohio, Pennsylvania, Michigan, Columbus. He loved the Buckeyes so much, he would ride his bike down to see the Buckeyes play. Eric was humble, mission-minded, and fun. His mind was always on helping others. And even though he's gone, his outreach is still very strong for bicycle safety. Since Eric was killed by an impaired driver, it's my duty, as is his surviving spouse, to work toward reform of accident investigation. And thank you so much for the beautiful plaque. I love the picture. It'll be right out in the hall for a whole year. Thank you kindly.
I'll turn it back to you, Mr. President. So before, and I'll make up my report whenever you want me to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on with our agenda, the minutes of the meeting that was held on June 5, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
It's all moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, is there a correspondence this evening?
Um, yes. I distributed to you prior to the meeting an additional budget transfer that needs to be approved this evening.
Thank you, Kay. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfer?
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfer is approved as presented.
And then also, I distributed to you prior to the meeting the financial budget summary report for the month of May 2017. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone in attendance who would like to participate in lobby visitation. Kay, do we have anyone sign in this evening?
Um, yes. Colleen Smith.
Very good. Colleen, if you would begin by approaching the microphone and stating your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Smith. My address is 1126 Clark Street, Bowling Green, Ohio. I'm here this evening because you have on your agenda the reading, a third reading for an ordinance that will in fact transfer property to the Wood County Committee on Aging for a new facility. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the Board and on behalf, behalf of Denise Nice, for doing this, this transfer. We think that the building that we've been in has been absolutely wonderful. We, we generate 851 meals a day. 500 of those are delivered to home, and the rest of them are taken to various sites and eaten by seniors. The services that are provided by the Wood County Committee on Aging are just absolutely marvelous. And I only tell you that because someday, you like me, are going to be needing those services as well. But my main object tonight is to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I think it's time for us all to move forward, and this certainly will do that. This probably isn't the last time you'll hear from us, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. I know that the city is pleased to be able to continue to work with the Department of Aging as a partner, and certainly value everything that you provide for a community. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Is there other others who would like to speak to council on any agenda items or any other business pertaining to the city? Okay, seeing none, we move forward with our official reports to be led off by Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled. There are several items I wish to report on this evening. First is that this coming Wednesday, June 21, at 4:00 p.m., there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new outdoor exercise area at the Wood County Hospital. And it's another one of those wonderful additions to the, for our community. And I really commend Stan Corducki and his team there at the Wood County Hospital for working with Kristin Ottley and the Parks Board and also the Board at the hospital to make this happen. It's, it's, it's a very attractive addition to our, our community. The Worcester Green Steering Committee will be meeting on Thursday at 4:00 p.m. in the, in the second-floor conference room of the Wood County District Public Library. We will be making plans for a public viewing feedback event of four basic concept plans based on the recommendations of the design and steering committees, and the public with additional design assistance from, with the Pogomire Design Group. I'm really grateful to Troy Sonner and Jack Jones of the Pogomire Design Group, because they are undertaking this project in concert with their 50th anniversary of doing business in the City of Bowling Green. Since I raised the issue at the last meeting of council, I wish to confirm that I have joined with the U.S. Conference of Mayors in supporting the Climate Protection Agreement for renewed and continuing efforts to improve the environment and promote higher degrees of energy sustainability through the use of non-fossil fuels. Further, I have talked directly with the Chair of the Environmental Commission for the conference, Mayor Jim Brainard of Carmel, Indiana, who is in his sixth-four-year term of office, and who has taken a special interest in Bowling Green's effort, efforts of attaining more than 40% energy sustainability. And I'm particularly grateful to the good work of Brian O'Connell, his entire staff, and the Board of Public Utilities that we've talked a little bit about in the, in the last hour of their good work. As you well know, and I made some reference to it when I was up here before, this is a critical time period for municipalities as the General Assembly moves toward completion of the next biennial budget. I have been in direct communication with State Senator Randy Gardner to register our continuing concerns, and he fully understands those concerns. Our own Tax Commissioner, Rob Wright, has testified in Columbus on our behalf and on behalf of the Ohio Municipal League. He is working closely with the Ohio Municipal League Executive Director Kent Scarlett and his staff in this regard. And Rob's not with us tonight, but I know that he's been very dedicated, not only working with the Ohio Municipal League, but also working with his fellow tax commissioners from throughout the state of Ohio, and particularly those in Northwest Ohio. On a more personal note, I wish to thank you, Mr. President, for serving in my place for the Flag Day and Elder Rebuthe ceremonies last Wednesday, and Sandy Rowland for handling the honors at Friday's ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new soma massage on South Main Street. Did I get that right there?
You got it right.
Did you get a massage?
I didn't get a massage.
Wow, geez, that's got to go with. Mr. President, members of council, this concludes my report, unless you have questions for me. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all of your help during my, my short absence here, and.
Thank you, sir. Other questions for the mayor? Very good. Thank you so much. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. Always a pleasure to have somebody here who, who held this job previously. So, Colleen, always nice to see you and continued service here in our community. And speaking of things occurring in our community, we have a couple upcoming events that we want to remind folks of and give you a little bit of information about. July 3, we'll be here before we know it, and that's going to be when we'll have our community fireworks. The community band concert will kick things off at 8:00 p.m. with a performance at the, near the Milette Alumni Center. And a couple of our very own folks, including our mayor, plays in that, and Brian Bouchong play in that band. But it's, it's wonderful. They're going to have a patriotic theme out there. And then you can stick around. And at dusk, we will set off the fireworks at the BGSU Inner mural fields, kind of our usual place. So meet us there, and we'll look forward to seeing you. Do have a couple quick notes for folks. As a reminder, no sparklers, fireworks, or skylanterns are allowed out on the property there. Dwight Perry Stadium will again be closed this year due to construction, but they are going to have the restrooms opened. And when you're leaving the fireworks, we ask for your patience with folks. There will be police officers at the major intersections. They have a traffic exit strategy. They have certain ways that they're putting people. And I know you may want to go this way, and the police are telling you to go that way. Please just go where the police are asking you to. There is, there is a reason behind it. It's for safety. It's for efficiency. It's to get everybody home safely. And it's important that, that we listen to those. An event like this does not happen just because of one entity. Our Chamber of Commerce is the one that spearheads this event and does the fundraising for it. BGSU is our partner in hosting it. And several of our departments and divisions put in a lot of labor in preparation for it on the, and on the night of the event to make sure that everybody has a safe time and enjoys those festivities. We also, before we see you again, will have our Downtown Car Show, which will occur on Saturday, July 8. The event itself will take place from noon until 4:00 p.m. However, we will start closing the roads a bit earlier, at 5:00 a.m. actually. Main Street is going to close from Clay into Pearl Street. And as usual, Worcester will remain open, as we do for all of our festivals, but all the other cross streets in that closure area will be closed. Parking will also be removed from Main Street in that area, and there's a part of Clay Street as well. And City Lot 6, which is this lot out here next to the senior center, will also have parking removed. Again, partnerships are key. The Sentinel Tribune, it works hard to bring this event to us, Downtown BG, and of course, our city support staffs, again, are out there bright and early, helping to, to make this event happen. So we thank and commend all of you. And the last thing I have for you this evening is, follow-up to your request, seeking clarification about the golf cart legislation, talking about vehicles. And I apologize if it's been confusing. To best understand the proposed change that we're now bringing to you, so from what we originally brought, and we had asked for an amendment, which I think you put into place last time, is that there is a difference between a low-speed vehicle and an underspeed vehicle. And we tried, Joe made pictures, because he had to do this for me, because I was having trouble understanding. So I'm going to pass these down the line. But here's, if you can see this, this is a, I'll do this for the camera. How about that? So in general, a low-speed vehicle comes from the factory, street-ready, and it can accelerate more quickly. And as it currently stands, low-speed vehicles are already regulated and may have, and must have a license plate. Therefore, they do not have to be regulated by this ordinance. Again, the state included that oddly in the title, but then they made no reference to it into the body of the legislation. it into the body of the legislation. So, that's why we think your legislation can remove it. Under-speed vehicles, like your typical golf cart, are not currently plated and licensed and that was the focus of the state regulations. And that's what we are attempting to get into compliance with through this legislation would be a, a way to make that, to make those operate. So, as previously mentioned, the local government is allowed to make provisions for under-speed vehicles if they implement an inspection program. The Police Division will administer this program. And as a reminder, the proposed legislation will allow for vehicles that pass the inspection. Remember, the state gave us the specifications of what is included in that inspection. They will be allowed to operate on 25 mile an hour streets with the exception of Main and Worcester Streets. And so, that completes my report. Subject to any questions?
Other questions for Lori?
Couple things. Lori, it seems that my recollection is in the past, I saw people driving golf carts on, on the street just with their clubs going to the course. Was that illegal?
It wasn't at the time the state changed the law. And so, when that law went into effect earlier this year, now it would be not legal for them to be on a public street.
Unless they upgrade the vehicle accordingly.
Correct, correct. And, and go through the inspection program.
And the low-speed vehicles, they are not impacted by this legislation. They are already allowed on all streets?
Correct. Well, Tony, I guess you can clarify about that, but they have their certain regulations. They're already regulated as the bottom line and the police then know what they're allowed to do. But even, and in fact, this, this discrepancy about us having the low-speed vehicle in the title was brought up to us by somebody who is operating a low-speed vehicle in the city. He knew the difference because he knew what he was allowed to do and not do and said, "Go back, read the legislation." Yeah, they put it in the title. They didn't put it in the body of the legislation. In fact, we're already regulated and, and we did verify that. And so, we just wanted, since we're, we're putting it out there, we'd like our legislation to be as clear as possible.
Very good. Thank you, Lori.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Other questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
I'm okay.
Other questions for Kristen? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell, I think is not with us this evening. Okay. And Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Questions for Brian? Thank you. Moving on to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017 and ending December 31, 2017. I have an ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01A, G, and N of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established and declaring an emergency. And I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.27A and C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding vacations effective July 3, 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bob.
I have two pieces of legislation from the Public Utilities Committee. First, an ordinance accepting easement from Nathan M. Bernath and Emily Bernath for purposes of installing a streetlight at 1159 Dakota Court. And also, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer the former Manville Water Tower properties to Habitat for Humanity.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
From the Community Improvement Committee, I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 94.05B of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding refuse and recycling collection. And this is probably the longest title I've ever had to read. A resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC Section 5311. Financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. The submittal of a proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a 5339B and 5339 grant through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit law and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, and executing contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal acceptance, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2018 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval. Clap for Kay too, when that comes up.
Thank you, Daniel.
You're welcome.
Well done, Daniel. I've had to read that about 11 times and I usually stumble through that one. And when Kay reads it, it's almost like she's singing it. From the Transportation and Safety Committee, I have two resolutions. We have a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended BG Transit Drug and Alcohol Testing Program, or Policy, I should say. And we have a resolution amending and adopting changes to the procurement manual for the BG Transit System.
Thank you, John. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
As we all know up here, we had a committee of the whole meeting this evening to discuss our ongoing issue with the General Fund and replenishing the revenue in the General Fund and we came to something of a conclusion tonight. We took the three options we had narrowed the field down to and we selected the trash collection fee to be instituted come January 1st. There will be a number of details that still need to be worked out with the administration and an appropriate ordinance to be passed. But the intention here is that whatever it costs us to collect trash, we will charge the residents who receive that service that amount so that the city nets out at not having to spend anything for trash collection that, that we're not recovering. It came up during the meeting that there may be ways to reduce our trash collection costs and the fact that people will be charged directly for this might give them an incentive more than they've had in the past to want to participate in some of those efforts. And that certainly is an idea worth pursuing. And I think none of us are happy about having to take this particular action, but for the umpteenth time, I would remind, would remind people that the reason this action needed to be taken was because we've lost over 10% of our funding in the General Fund due to actions of mostly the state and to a lesser extent, the federal government. Funding that we had been receiving for decades just disappeared on us over a course of a few years and the General Fund just cannot withstand that loss without replacing at least some of the revenue. And this is the method we have chosen to do that.
Thank you, Bob. Additional committee reports.
Mr. President?
Jeffers.
From the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee. I'm gonna report on the Welcome BG Task Force and I'll explain why it might be appropriate for this committee in a moment, but the main thing is we had a resolution supporting immigrants in our community that followed up on a resolution to oppose Islamophobia, which followed several years ago. We had an ordinance to oppose discrimination of various types. In many respects, would make more sense for John to report on this. We were at the same meeting, but tough. This is coming through the Human Relations Commission, Committee and Commission and we have Margaret Montague on that and Mary Jane Saunders and Beatrice Maya is on this and a number of other people, just really, really great people. And they just, they reach out to people who are in, in difficult situations. They, they know immigrants who need help and it's, it's just really great to see people in our community that don't just sit back and, and complain. They're just out there trying to help people. It's really great. But anyway, so to follow up, I know Bob was interested in, hey, we make this resolution, you know, what's, what's gonna be the outcome of this? And so, there's just baby steps to, to get to what, what's gonna be done. And so, the, one of the first things the group did was investigate other cities that have already implemented welcome programs, including Toledo, Detroit, Dayton, Columbus, Cincinnati, and Shelbyville, Tennessee. And trying to, trying to come up with some, some real specific goals, not trying to do everything. And so, I'm only gonna mention one of the goals now since, since I'm speaking through economic development lies. And so, the, the group is, is trying to understand what the economic implications are for welcoming or not welcoming immigrants into the community. There's a lot of other details, but that's all I'll say on that. Second thing is, involves South Bend, Indiana. There's a school in South Bend, you may have heard of it. It's not nearly the school that Bowling Green State University is, but our, our planning consultants did a, a big project in South Bend. It's right across the street from Notre Dame. And you can, you don't actually have to drive there. They have this thing as you can just look on their computer and you can see as much as I saw by driving there, but you know, you can see they're built, so look, go, do that. Look at their buildings right across, it's from Notre Dame, it's the Eddie Commons. And you can just see what they're, what they mean by some of their project ideas. I think you'll like it. I think you'll especially like the way they transition from the main street across from their university, the way they transition back into the existing neighborhood with single-family homes. So, I think that's just a nice thing. It was nice to see, but, but you can more or less do the same thing. So, I guess the report is that I did that and the, the planning continues. And Heather, do, do we have a date when they're, they're coming back for the public, the next public meeting?
Most likely in August, but no date yet.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there additional council committee reports? Great. Moving on to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3670 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC Section 5311. Financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. The submittal of a proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a 5339B and 5339 grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit law and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and executing contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal acceptance, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2018 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval.
I told you to clap for her.
Two more times, too.
Yeah.
Resolution Number 3671 for first reading. Resolution amending and adopting changes to the procurement manual for the BG Transit Program. Resolution Number 3672 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended BG Transit Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. Ordinance Number 8605 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017 and ending December 31, 2017.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8605 its second and third readings.
Second, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8605.
Ordinance Number 8605 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017 and ending December 31, 2017.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8605.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please be, or would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8605 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8606 for first reading. Ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. Ordinance Number 8607 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01A, G, and N of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8607 its second and third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Comber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8607.
Ordinance Number 8607 for second and third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01A, G, and N of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
Move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8607.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Rowland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8607.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8607.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just want to mention for everyone's benefit that the purpose of this ordinance is to give our non-unionized employees a salary increase of a percent and a half, which is the amount in the first year of the contracts that the unions we've settled with thus far this year are also receiving. And the reason to have it, an emergency clause, is so that our non-union employees can get their salary increase starting with their first July paycheck. So, we need to have this in effect beforehand. We could have done three readings separately and made it retroactive and I told Brian Bouchong to do whatever was easiest, so we're doing it, doing it this way. I will say that I am, take some pride in the fact that in 12 years on city council, that we've always tried to treat our non-union employees just the same as our unionized employees. We have five different unions and they each have different issues that are particular to their particular union, which is why they, they, they are unionized. But in terms of the basic salary increases that folks receive, every year I've been on council, everybody's gotten the same thing, no matter which union you were in or whether you were unionized or not-unionized. This just continues that trend.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any further discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8607 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8608 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.27A and C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding vacations effective July 3, 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8608 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8608.
Ordinance Number 8608 for second and third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.27A and C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding vacations effective July 3, 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8608.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes, the emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8608.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8608.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this ordinance is pretty similar to the last one, the emergency clause is so that the ordinance can go into effect in early July, and it involves, it's a little technical, but it involves having non-bargaining hourly employees get the same vacation, paid vacation accrual rate as certain bargaining employees. So it's just equating the non-bargaining employees to similarly situated bargaining employees. And I don't know Barb or Brian if there's anything else to say about this particular ordinance, that's about it, isn't it?
Thank you, Bob. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes, Ordinance 8608 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8609 for first reading. Ordinance accepting easement from Nathan M. Bernath and Emily Bernath for purposes of installing a streetlight at 1159 Dakota Court. Ordinance Number 8610 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer the former Mannville Water Tower properties to Habitat for Humanity. Ordinance Number 8611 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 94.05B of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding refuse and recycling collection. Legislation for second reading. Resolution Number 3668 for second reading. Resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2018. Ordinance Number 8596 for second reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 60.102 acres of land in Centertownship, Wood County, Ohio from RJ Carpenter Family Limited Partnership petitioners. Ordinance Number 8597 for second reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 43.03 acres of land in Centertownship, Wood County, Ohio from Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust petitioner. Ordinance Number 8598 for second reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 0.50 acres of land in Plain Township, Wood County, Ohio from Sandra K. Miller petitioner. Ordinance Number 8599 for second reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Worcester Street as petition for by RJ Carpenter Family Limited Partnership. Ordinance Number 8600 for second reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Poe Road as petition for by Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust. Ordinance Number 8601 for second reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of R2 single-family residential zoning for the property located at 16471 Brim Road and recently annexed to the city as petition for by Sandra K. Miller. Ordinance Number 8602 for second reading. Ordinance accepting a utility easement from Bowling Green Lodge LLC. Ordinance Number 8604 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the Utilities Director to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority and to request qualifications for engineering services and advertise bids and enter into a contract or contracts for utility and right-of-way improvements for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8604 its third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes, the emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8604. I move to adopt Ordinance 8604.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? I would just comment that the reason for the expedited processing of this piece of legislation is to allow us to keep up with project deadlines, it's a fast-moving project, and certainly we're happy to see the Woodbridge Business Park expanding. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes, Ordinance 8604 is adopted.
Legislation for third reading. Ordinance Number 8589 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing an exchange of real estate with the First Presbyterian Church of Bowling Green and the subsequent donation of real estate to the Wood County Committee on Aging for the ultimate use as a new senior citizens center and related facilities.
Mr. President?
Mr. Seliger?
I move to adopt Ordinance 8589.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes, Ordinance 8589 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8590 as amended for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 75.01 and creating and adopting Section 75.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding under-speed or utility vehicle or mini-truck.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8590.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 8604.
Ordinance Number 8604 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the Utilities Director to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority and to request qualifications for engineering services and advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for utility and right-of-way improvements for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8604.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.